So this is the Wednesday. May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state local emergency due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of planning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directors of the State of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the planning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, the Courier News, on the township website and within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this meeting. Link to the virtual meeting via WebEx, call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials is made available at the township website and/or in the planning zoning department of the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicant witnesses have finished presenting, at which time I will ask the board for comment. Instructions for public input. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raise hand button in the WebEx to use this feature. Click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window, there will be a hand icon. Click on it to raise your hand. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After you're done speaking, if you're on the WebEx, please press the lower hand button. So we don't think you're want to make a second comment, and if calling in, please press star three again. With that, um, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase.
Here.
Paul How.
Present.
Make here repeat. Here, Mustafa Mansre, I don't see. Uh, Mr. Chairman Jennifer Ragno and Robert Thomas contacted me and asked to be excused, so you're aware.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Charles Brown.
Here.
Carol Schmidt.
Here.
Sammy Chavon. And Chairman Orsini.
Here.
Um, so it doesn't appear that we have minutes from the last meeting ready yet. So that's not on the agenda. Uh, so we have two resolutions, the first being Prisco Properties LLC PLN twenty dash zero 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 one one. And obtain a motion for that. So I'll go ahead and move to approve.
Oh. Well, I'll second it then.
Thanks, Dan.
That was it? Okay. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Paul How?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And the second resolution we have is BSRP three seventeen Schoolhouse Road LLC PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 two. If anyone wants to.
No, I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Paul How?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. So it doesn't look like we have any discussion items tonight, so we'll move snappily right into public comment. Um, this section is for the public to comment on any planning issue that is not the subject of a separate hearing tonight. If you are here for Cal Sterling Franklin LLC, that will have its own separate hearing at which you can speak. Swill with that, I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public for general planning comments.
As was the chairman indicated, we'll wait a few moments here. If anybody has any general planning comments, if you're on WebEx, you can do the raised hand function, or if you're calling in, you can press star three if any general planning comments you want to bring to the board's attention. Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand.
Thanks, Mark. So with that, I'll make a motion to close to the public.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting is now closed to the public hearings. One hearing tonight, Cal Sterling LLC PLN twenty-one dash zero 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 nine. Now, I'm going to assume from the participants list that Peter is representing. We'll give him a chance to get everything lined up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I, it appears I just had gotten a text that some of my experts were not able to log on, but it appears they have made their appearance. So let me commence. Uh, I am here on behalf of Cal Sterling, the applicant. Uh, there's sort of good news and bad news with this application. Uh, you will not be hearing a warehouse application tonight. That's the good news. The bad, the bad news, you'll be hearing me again tonight. So you're stuck with that. This is an application uh, to amend a site plan that was approved in two thousand and three. Uh, in two thousand and three, the planning board granted a resolution of approval to the applicant uh, to construct uh, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-six single-family homes, twenty-nine townhouses, and seventy-two apartments in three buildings for a total of two hundred and thirty-seven units. All of these are age-restricted. Um, the applicant did, in fact, construct the single-family homes, did, in fact, construct the townhouses, cleared the site for the apartments, but never constructed the apartments. Uh, we are back here to amend the site plan to obtain approval this evening to construct instead of seventy-two apartments and three buildings, sixty apartments and two buildings. Uh, so we are reducing the number of units in conjunction with this application. Uh, in reviewing the uh, record from two thousand and three, it appears that Dr. Chase and Mr. Orsini sat on the application and voted on it, so they may have some recollection of the history of this application. Uh, but all of the many members, obviously, were not part of that presentation. Uh, this evening, I do have four potential witnesses. Perhaps we can get away with three. Uh, I have our civil engineer, Mr. Schulman, our landscape architect and planner, Mr. Hamilton, and our architect, Mr. Brennan. Uh, Mr. Schulman and Mr. Hamilton are from the same firm. They both worked on the plan. Uh, actually, Mr. Hamilton testified in two thousand and three with the original application. So I think in making this presentation this evening, I want to do something a little bit different. Mr. Chairman, I think I'd like to swear in both Mr. Schulman and Mr. Hamilton uh, to go over the old site plan and the new site plan, uh, since they are going to be talking in different areas of their expertise, and they can communicate to the board in their areas of expertise, if that is okay with you.
Sounds good, Peter. I like, I like the fact that you're going to help our basically all-new board, except for me and Ted. Now, it's been a long time, maybe too long. Um, so, uh, to, to frame the application, so appreciate that.
All right. If we can, uh, if we can swear in then both uh, Mr. Schulman and Mr. Hamilton, and after we swear them in, if we can turn the screen over to them, because they will be relying on certain exhibits.
All right. Gentlemen, if you could each raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Starting with Mr. Hamilton, if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record.
William Hamilton, H.A.M.I.L.T.O.N., fifty-four Horse Hill Road, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
And Mr. Schulman, same question.
Jacob Schulman, or Jake Schulman. Last name is spelled S.C.H.U.L.M. as in Mary, A.N. as in Nancy, with the same address.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lanfrid, you want to qualify then for us?
I absolutely will. We'll start with Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, uh, can you, uh, you are both a licensed professional landscape architect and a licensed professional planner in the State of New Jersey?
I am, and my licenses are current.
All right. Can you just very briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I'm a principal with Bowman Consulting. Again, licensed landscape architect, licensed professional planner, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh, I've been working in the field for the past thirty years. As, as you indicated earlier, I did testify on this application back in two thousand and three or two thousand and four. Uh, I had more hair then, but but I've also testified before many boards throughout the state. I've worked on projects of a similar nature to the one here this evening. Um, and I've been licensed since nineteen eighty-five.
I would offer the testimony of Mr. Hamilton as both a uh, professional planner and landscape architect, Mr. Chairman.
He's accepted, Peter, and I didn't, I don't think he looked any, any different.
You're my best friend.
Mr. Schulman, can you very briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure. Um, I am a professional engineer in New Jersey. I've been licensed since twenty nineteen, and my license is current. Um, I received a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from University of Maryland in twenty thirteen. Um, and I've been practicing civil engineering since twenty thirteen and have been a consulting engineer in northern and central New Jersey since twenty fifteen.
I would offer his testimony as a civil engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Accepted, Peter.
Okay, and just for the record, both of you gentlemen worked on the plans which are the subject of this application this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hamilton, let's start with you, since you have the history of this project. Can you indicate to the board what was approved in nineteen eighty-three? And if you have any maps or exhibits that sort of can refresh the board's recollection of, did I say eighty-three? I'm sorry, two thousand and three. Can you refresh the board's recollection concerning the original project?
I'd be happy to, and I'm, I'm going to ask Jake if he could help me with the exhibits to pull up. Uh, the first one we have prepared, I guess, we'll call it, what, exhibit A one?
Was it part of the plan set, or is this a new exhibit?
No, this is a new exhibit.
All right. Can we mark it A one, Mr. Vignolo?
Mr. Lanfrid, did we have it forty-eight hours in advance?
I don't know if, I know we had submitted some exhibits. I don't know, was this one submitted forty-eight hours in advance, Mr. Hamilton?
Um, I believe it was.
I, I think it was.
I was going to say, I got to defer to the professional staff, Christine and Mark. I don't know what we have. So if we got it, then we can use it. If we didn't have it forty-eight hours in advance.
Give me, give me a moment to check.
Thank you. I don't understand the new, you know, Open Public Meeting Act regulations that say you can't have exhibits on the fly, but in a virtual meeting, but they decided, makes no sense.
Uh, we, we can work around it if we had to.
I'm sure you can, and I don't mean to be a pain, but I don't want to cause a problem for you guys later.
Peter, while they're considering, if the governor declares the emergency at an end, do we have to go back to in-person hearings thereupon?
We are, we are going to have to, uh, take a look at what the net effect of the end of the emergency is. So if he got rid of it altogether, I'd look at the regulations, and we might need to. Um, that's on my to-do list in light of what's going on in the anticipated action in June. And, um, you know, just not knowing what the nature of his action's going to be, whether it's going to be a step backward or a complete, you know, um, you know, cancels, a cancellation of the state of emergency, so.
So I just checked what's on the website. Normally, when we get exhibits in advance, we put it up on the website. I don't see anything. So I don't believe we received anything.
So then, what we could do then is just refer to the drawings that were part of the set that was submitted?
Right, if you refer to the key map on the drawings, which I believe is on C two, I think that will probably be able to, uh, show the board the project in, in some detail.
Okay.
Uh, Jake, Jake, if you can pull sheet two up on the, on the, uh, screen.
You got it. Um, how do I share the screen? Oh, share, share content?
Yes. There you go.
Oh, awesome.
And you're at the right page, and if.
That's perfect.
Okay. Proceed, Mr. Hamilton.
So as, as Mr. Lanfrid had indicated, uh, this project was originally approved as a PRD back in two thousand and four, and it included a mixture of one hundred and thirty-six single-family units, twenty-nine townhomes, and seventy-two apartments. Uh, in the middle of the key map that's shown here on, on this sheet, you'll see we've delineated the lot and the area that was originally, uh, put aside for the seventy-two apartments. That was never built. Uh, that property was cleared. It was readied for construction, and then, uh, mostly for market reasons, um, that product was never built. It was a, a three-story building. It was, there were three buildings proposed as part of the application that was approved, and it included all surface parking. Now, the applicant wishes to develop that same area, which is essentially at the end of Spangenberg Lane. It's in the very rear of the Sterling Point Project, uh, adjacent to the Renaissance Project, um, for sixty units in two buildings. So the density has gone down a bit from what was originally proposed, seventy-two to sixty. We've, um, we've changed from two buildings, I'm sorry, from three buildings to two buildings, but the buildings are a little different. And Jake is going to get into the details of that, but I can tell you that the buildings as proposed are four stories as opposed to three. Um, and there's garages proposed for a number of the units within each building. And again, we'll give you the details on those. So I, I guess I'll pass it over to Jake, and we can talk specifically about the site itself, and then I'll come back a little later to talk about landscaping, lighting, and the two variances that are, that we're requesting with this application.
All right. Um, so can, just making sure that people could hear me?
You're fine, Jake. Uh, can you
Awesome.
bring up to, to the screen the site plan that we are proposing? Uh, first of all, the exhibit that you have before you, which is, I believe, sheet three of the plan set, basically shows the existing condition. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and can you indicate to the board what the existing conditions are?
So the site is primarily vacant, aside from the, a cul-de-sac at the end of Spangenberg Lane, um, which is asphalt. The rest of the site is cleared area, which is a mixture of dirt and gravel and light vegetation, which is primarily weeds that tend to pop up after a site is cleared. Um, and the property is located in the senior citizen village, village district, the SCV zone, and has a total of around five point six acres.
And can you indicate, uh, and perhaps it'd be better if you moved to the next exhibit, which I believe is the site plan? And do we have a color rendering of that site plan?
We do have a color rendering. I am not, I, I did, I'm not sure if it was submitted.
That, I believe, was submitted in advance. I think my office submitted it. Uh, if we, if Mr. Hilli can confirm that, I think it'd probably be better if the board looked at the color rendering.
I, I'll check through my emails, but it's not on the website, which indicates to me that it was not submitted, but uh, I'll look through my emails and try to confirm, but um, for the time being, I think you have to assume it wasn't submitted. But again, I'm going to look through my emails to try to confirm.
I'm, I'm sure we submitted it, but it may have gotten lost in the translation, but we can move on with, with the sheet three of the plans. Uh, if, if you can, uh, Jake, can you take the board through what we are proposing, uh, with respect to this project?
Of course. So the applicant's proposing two apartment buildings, um, with a total of ten one-bedroom units and fifty-two bedroom units. And you can see between the two buildings, um, is an amenities area with some seating. Also proposed is a dog run over here and a community garden. Um, at, in the cold, or right off the cul-de-sac, we also have a twenty-foot by twenty-five-foot utility shed. And a sidewalk is proposed from the end of Spangenberg Lane, connecting the rest of the site, uh, the rest of the Sterling Point development to the site. Um, and with regard to a conformance with, well, yeah, with regard to conformance with the ordinance, I'm going to let Bill do most of that discussion, but we can form, conform with, um, we comply with most of the ordinances. We're requesting two variances for a building, for the building height, and for the required fifty-foot vegetated buffer.
Can you describe for the board how we are going to handle parking and circulation?
So parking is, is provided primarily in garages with adjoining driveways. The, however, there's also forty, forty-five um, parking spaces proposed along these access drives. Um, as the, uh, architect will hopefully discuss in, uh, shortly, that will become forty-seven parking spaces, because we're talking about eliminating, uh, two of the garages. Um, but the parking regulation, or the parking conforms with the RSIS, which would require a hundred and eighteen spaces, and half a space per unit provided uh, at, on street or in a parking lot. And we, that would be thirty of those spaces provided in a parking lot. We provide forty-five in parking, in a, on-street or parking lot parking. Um, and the rest in garages.
Okay. Bottom line is, we exceed the RSIS requirements for parking on this site, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and can you now describe how circulation will work on this site?
There are four access drives proposed. The two surrounding the amenity area are the main access drives. They provide access to the dumpsters and to the lobby. Um, and there are, and the two access drives along the, closer to the perimeter of the property, provide access to the parking spaces near the dog run and community garden, as well as to the, uh, units in the back. Um, and you can see there's sidewalk from those parking areas to, uh, provide pedestrian access to the rest of the site.
And to the rear of the buildings, there is an area that is, uh, going to also be paved.
That area, are you referring to the fire access?
Yes.
So yes, that area was initially proposed as grass pavers. Um, but the fire official has indicated that that is required to be paved, so we're going to comply with his, um, you know, we have no objection to that.
Okay, and, and that area is not for public access? That is strictly a, uh, fire lane, so that the emergency vehicles can access the, actually would be the sides of the building, is that correct?
That's correct.
And there will be gates, uh, at the beginning of that fire lane that will, uh, give access to the fire department, but will keep the residents, uh, off of that, and they will not be allowed to drive in that. Is that also correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you indicate to the board how we will be handling trash and recycling?
Trash and recycling will be provided in two enclosures at the rear of the property. Each one is ten feet by twenty feet, and both trash and recycling will be, uh, dumpsters will be provided in there, and residents will take their trash out of their apartments and, uh, discard them within those enclosures.
And then, uh, the, well, the trash and the recycling, what trash will be taken by, uh, private hauler, and recycling will be taken probably by the county, is that correct?
The recycling will be taken also by a private hauler.
Okay, very good. Uh, can you indicate what utilities will be serving the site and how they are going to be brought to the site?
So it's, the site will be serviced by gas, electric, sewer, and water, all public utilities. With regard to sewer, there is already a manhole at the, um, northern portion of the site, which is, is on the upper portion of the site plan. Um, which connects to the sewer system in Spangenberg Lane. And that will, so we are connecting to that manhole, and I'm going to bring up the utility plan. There we go. Um, as you see, our sanitary connects to that existing manhole. Um, water will also be, um, service, uh, connected to the existing water lines, Spangenberg Lane, and in a water easement that abuts the southern, a southern portion of the property. Um, and gas and water are also both available on Spangenberg Lane and will be extended to the, to the project.
Thank you. Uh, can you briefly describe how we're going to handle drainage?
So drain, the stormwater will be collected by inlets, which will be piped in concrete pipe to a detention basin. It's comprised of two portions, labeled basin one A and basin one B. There's an equalizer pipe between them to, to, uh, to enable them to function as one basin. And the stormwater will, uh, will be treated by a water quality device, uh, contact water quality device. And the, um, the, the water will then flow through a pipe to an existing culvert, which enables us to safely scar the, uh, you know, safely convey the water without disturbing any of the undisturbed area within the, and within the conservation easement.
Now, on, on this site, this area that we are developing, are there, uh, any environmental constraints? Are there any wetlands, uh, any stream encroachment buffers or anything of that nature?
There is a, a portion of the property is in a flood hazard area. That line is shown in light gray. Um, it's along the, uh, northwestern side of the property. We've already received a NJDP flood hazard verification to verify that this is the flood hazard line, and our improvements are going to be kept out of that area.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I am not going to go into the staff reports at this time. I think we should probably, uh, jump back to Mr. Hamilton to talk about lighting, landscaping, and the variances, and then we can probably at that time deal with the staff reports as they pertain to their testimony. So, Mr. Hamilton, if you would like to come back and, uh, indicate to the board, uh, lighting and landscaping and, and variances.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
And, and before we start, Mr. Healy, uh, I think my, my office has provided documents and indicated that we had previously provided them to you within the allotted time, code. within the allotted time, color renderings, and we re-provided them to you. Is that accurate?
No, I have no evidence of having received color renderings.
Okay, all right, we'll continue with what we have then. Because I know we did provide them and my staff confirmed that we did provide them well in advance of the hearing, but whatever.
I checked my emails. I don't see anything.
Okay.
All right. So before you, was sheet eight of 20 of our site plan set, which is the landscape planting plan for the project. We believe it to be a generous plan where we've provided street trees, foundation plants, open space planting in the area between the two buildings, what we call the amenity area, as well as buffer plantings along all of the boundaries of the property. Overall, we've proposed 46 trees and 165 shrubs with a great variety of ground covers as well. Now, this number is going to go up. We did, you know, review the letters that we received from both your planner and engineer. There was a comment that we should add additional street trees to comply with the ordinance spacing requirements. So we agreed to do that. So our street tree number is going to go up somewhat. In addition, your planner had suggested additional buffer planting, particularly in the areas where we're going to be asking for variance relief. And I'm going to get into the variances a little bit. But I can tell you that we agree to that as well. So we're going to be adding additional buffer plantings in those areas. We also, as Jake had mentioned, have two storm management basins on the site, which are sort of the darker color areas. And those are going to be attractive areas as well. They'll be planted with wet site tolerant grass varieties and ground cover varieties, as well as shrubs and trees. So the entire site is going to be landscaped up to a high standard. Now, with regard to lighting, which I believe is sheet nine, Jake?
There we are.
Sheet 10, I apologize. So this is a copy of the lighting plan that was submitted with the application. We had proposed both pole-mounted as well as building-mounted lights to comply with your ordinance and provide, you know, safe and efficient lighting for, for the community. Those lights are, are mounted at a height of 15 feet, which is permissible by your ordinance and is consistent with the lights that have already been installed throughout the Sterling Park community. Now, one of the comments from your planner was that we should match the lights that are currently within the community. Because the lights that we had proposed here are somewhat different. They're ornamental, but they're a little different standard than what is currently out there, which, which is more of a traditional colonial type fixture. So if it's the board's direction, we'd be happy to do that to, to change our standard to, to more, to match more what's existing out there. We would obviously want to take advantage of new technology and provide, you know, energy-efficient lighting and LED lighting as opposed to, I believe, what's currently out there, which is, which is probably high-pressure sodium. So, so we will comply with the ordinance in every respect with regard to lighting. And again, if it's the board's direction, we'd be happy to adjust our fixture to, to one that matches more closely to the rest of Sterling Park.
Now, can you indicate to the board? Well, first of all, there are two variances, as Mr. Schulman pointed out, one being the height of the building. And I think I would like you to wait to render an opinion on that variance until the architect testifies. But with respect to the other variance, which deals with the buffer, can you indicate to the board where that variance is and the justification for that variance? And perhaps we can go back to the site plan sheet to indicate where that variance is being sought.
Yeah. So Peter, maybe, maybe it makes sense since both variances relate a little bit to the building design. If I could do them both at once after Mr. testified, that make, make more sense.
Okay, I, we can hold off on that. And let us move through the staff reports. And just for the record, Mr. Schulman, we did receive a report dated May 11th from CME, which contains, I believe it is nine pages. Is that correct?
That is, sorry, that's correct.
Okay. And upon receipt of that report, did you have the opportunity to have conversations with Mr. Mazzi from CME concerning the comments contained therein?
We did.
Okay. And can we address the comments that are contained in that report?
I believe so. We both, you know, the conversation was very productive and we both, we all got on the same page. And I believe that we can satisfactorily address their comments.
Okay. And in addressing their comments, would there be any significant or substantial changes to what the board is looking at this evening? And the plan set or most of the comments technical in nature?
Most of the comments are technical in nature. A lot of them were relating to stormwater. So there may be some minor changes to the stormwater calculations. But what is on the screen right now and what was portrayed in the plans will not change significantly.
Okay. I would, did you also have an opportunity to review the report of Mr. House dated May 5th, 2021?
Yes.
Okay. And can we address all of his comments?
I believe so.
Okay. And again, we will be changing the fire access lane behind the building so that it is 24 feet wide and it will not be grass papers, correct?
Correct.
See what other reports I have here. I think the only other report is Mr. Healy's report unless I've missed something or something was not provided to me. And I think Mr. Healy's report probably needs to be answered both by Mr. Hamilton or by Mr. Schulman. And, and I think it is important then in reviewing Mr. Healy's report, some of the comments that he made indicates that some of the buffering that we are not providing was sort of similar to what was proposed in 2003. But the issues that we need to address, and I guess some of it will be addressed by the architect. We've addressed the parking spaces. And when the architect testifies, we can talk about the garage spaces. For the record, Mr. Healy, the question you raised in the report on item number eight, how we can assure that the parking spaces will be used for parking as opposed to something other than parking. This is a situation unlike a townhouse complex or condominium complex where the, the residents own the property. The, this property are apartments. They will be leased. We will provide language in, in our lease agreements, which we can provide to the town, indicating that the areas that are designated as the parking areas to what the garages shall be made available at all times for the parking of motor vehicles. And that the violation of that would be a violation of the lease. I'm going through Mr. Healy's report. I think Mr. Hamilton already addressed the street tree issue and that we will comply with that. Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Healy in his report talks about that cul-de-sac bulb. Can you shed some light as to why that is on the plans? And was it on the plans originally? And why is it intended to remain on the plans?
Yeah, that cul-de-sac was put in at the request of the fire department a number of years ago because Spangenberg Lane was essentially a dead-end road. And there wasn't the ability for fire trucks or garbage trucks and delivery trucks to turn around. So that was put in for that purpose. We, you know, the, the planner has indicated, Mr. Healy has indicated that it should be, you know, could be potentially removed. We, we have no issue with that. But, you know, we felt that it would probably be beneficial and probably the fire chief would want to keep it for a turnaround as well as the residents of Spangerburg Lane. If we remove it, you know, a fire apparatus or delivery trucks, garbage trucks would have to circulate through the front of the two buildings and turn around. Not the most ideal situation, but again, we would leave it up to the board if, if they would like that cul-de-sac removed as part of this application.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just provide a little, shed a little bit of light on this. So my understanding is that the cul-de-sac was added when the Spandenberg Lane, I'm sorry, when, when the previous approval had not been built out. I believe Sterling Point wanted the bonds released. And the fire department at that point had determined that the bulb had to be put in place because there was no opportunity in that condition for vehicles to turn around. Now, with this proposal, there, there would be opportunity for vehicles to turn around. So I made that recommendation that we didn't really see the need for that cul-de-sac bulb. I believe Darren Mazzi from CME made a similar recommendation. And I did speak to John House and Fire Prevention. And he confirmed that he didn't see the need from his perspective in the build-out condition for that cul-de-sac bulb to be there. And we, both myself and Darren Mazzi made the recommendation that the removal would reduce impervious surface and also allow more landscaping and more, you know, kind of would make, make that road look more similar to the rest of the development. So that's, that's the background for, for the recommendation.
And the applicant's in total agreement with Mr. Healy in removing it if that's, that's the direction that you give us?
Okay. As I'm going through the rest of Mr. Healy's report, I believe they are only comments that do not need to be addressed by Mr. Hamilton or do not require any changes to the plan. I think the, the one thing that does need to be pointed out to the board, so the board is aware of it, is that when this project was approved, the senior citizen district overlay required a 70-acre tract, which this was. The ordinance right now was amended subsequent there to requires a 200-acre tract. So while it was approved as a 70-acre tract with the ordinance, the tract still remains a 70.41 acre tract. That has not changed. And I think unless I missed something, Mr. Healy, that we touched other than the, the planning testimony for the variances. But I think we touched on the changes that you requested or commented on through the direct testimony. Please advise me if I missed anything. I hope I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, and I've been in and out dealing with some housekeeping issues. So I'm assuming somebody's going to address the buffer variance at some point. That's, that'd be comment two.
That would be Mr. Hamilton after we hear the testimony of the architect. We'll testify.
Okay. And, okay, great. And that's, that'd be comment three as well, is forthcoming. I think four and five, yeah, I would agree. I don't think you could just address that and revise plans. Forgive me if I missed it, but the comment about bedroom distribution, there was some inconsistency on the plans. I assume that, was that addressed?
It, it was testified to that there are 10 one-bedrooms and 52 bedrooms. And if there are discrepancies on the plans, they will be corrected.
Okay. And comment seven, the comment's basically about the, the distribution of the parking and the number of spaces that are devoted to the, to the garage units. Did somebody address comment seven?
We testified as to the number of spaces that the garage spaces are going to be assigned, some of them to certain units, which will have obviously the space of the unit itself plus in the garage, plus the space behind the garage for parking. And that does meet the RSIS standard. That was all testified to. And we also have the adequate number of surface parking spaces. So that testimony was provided. And I don't know if you missed the testimony concerning number eight, which indicated that the concern, which the board has heard previously about garages being used as storage areas or whatever. We indicated that we would provide to the township copies of our leases. Fortunately, these are not fee ownership with their tenants. So the landlord does have control over those units and would make that garage available only for vehicles. And if it's not being used as such, it would be a violation of their lease.
All right. So then, yeah, I did hear that part. So then what I'm, so I think that the one remaining issue, and I believe Darren Mazzi brought this up as well. It's understood that on paper, you meet RSIS with, with respect to the total number of spaces and the number of surface spaces. The concern that was raised is of the 121 spaces, 76 of them are basically spoken for in the form of the tandem arrangement of the garage and driveway spaces. So then that leaves 45 spaces. That would be for the 22 other units that don't have a garage driveway tandem area assigned to them. Then on top of that, RSIS requires 30 spaces for visitors. So you have a 30-space parking, surface parking requirement. And you have the parking needs for 22 units. Basically, I'll just say fighting it out for 45 spaces. It's not a numbers issue. It's, it's a site layout concern of whether that's those 45 spaces are going to practically meet the needs for 30 visitors and the 22 units.
I can answer that.
Good. Jake, you want to address that? Or Mr. Hamilton? Can you draw, see, either one of you want to talk, talk to that?
Um, Bill, if it's all right with you, I could address that. The RSIS requires two spaces per, I'm sorry, yeah, two spaces per two-bedroom unit, which is the largest unit proposed. That two spaces includes half a space per, for guest parking. So that, the, the parking spaces provided on, on the streets and in parking lots alone would meet that. However, we also consulted with our, you know, we also took a look at the ITE fifth edition of Parking Generation Manual. And they, the recommend, based on those calculations, we would need approximately 37 parking spaces for the entire site. And we provide well over that. So based on that, we believe that there is more than enough parking.
Okay. So respectfully, I, I, both, both of your arguments are again, the total number. The, the concern here is the distribution of the spaces. You, you've, the, the way that the site is designed, you have 76 of the spaces basically being, being assigned in this tandem arrangement where you have the driveway in front of the garage. Logically, those two spaces basically go together. Those 72 six spaces are going to be assigned to 38 of the units. So that means that the 22 other units are going to have access. So using the numbers you cited, 22 units, two spaces per unit, the parking requirement for those 22 units is going to be 44 spaces. And then you have the 30-space requirement for visitors. So it's, it's, I think there might be a practical issue of those 22 spaces and the 30 visitors being, having access to only 45 of the 121 parking spaces.
But Mr. Healy, the RSIS is clear that, you know, as Jake indicated, the half, the half a visitor space is not added on to the requirement for surface parking for an apartment. It's included within that number. So that the 45 spaces for 22 units So that the 45 spaces for 22 units meets both the standard with respect to how many parking spaces are needed for that unit, you know, the two spaces as well as the half a space for visitor parking. So.
I, I, I understand the 30, that the 121, uh, what, what is your total parking requirement?
118 spaces.
118. So I understand that of the 118 that, that, that is inclusive of the 30 space uh visitor. I understand that. I, again, I, I, I think practically you're going to have, I mean, I've said it three times now, but you know, the, 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 you're going to have 22 units needing 44 spaces. That basically is the sum of your surface parking and then you are going to have visitors. Where are they going to park?
Well, Mr. Healy, first of all, you, you're then making the assumption that every single one of these units will have two vehicles. Okay, uh, there's one bedroom apartments here. Uh, there's also two bedroom apartments, but I, I don't, I don't think you can make the assumption uh that in this situation that you will be having two vehicles per unit. Uh, we're, we're dealing with an apartment complex with one, with a number of one bedroom apartments. So my guess is that you will be having less than the two bedroom, two vehicles per unit within that complex.
May I speak? I just, there's a scenario I see. Somebody who has garage with parking space behind comes out and he has a car in the garage and he doesn't use the other one. He comes out and finds the, the visitor to somebody else's apartment has parked in the space just outside his garage and therefore he can't get out. That's what I'd call a conflict.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's possible for somebody to, there, there is no parking in that area where the garages are uh for somebody to park in the street to block somebody exiting that garage. Uh, there are some parking spaces designated in the center island, but uh where the driveways are for the houses, there is no parking. So no one can park legally in front of any of those driveways and, and block any of those uh driveways.
Well, then I don't, then your arrangement is not what I thought it was and what Mr. Healy thought it was.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Mr. Lanter might be misinterpreting what your, your concern is. I, Ted, can, correct me if I'm wrong. I think your concern is somebody parks in the driveway area in front of the garage of one of those units. A visitor pulls, a visitor visiting unit five pulls into the driveway in front of the garage assigned to unit 10. Is that, is that the concern that you're raising? And then I guess the second question is, how does that get, how, how is that going to be prevented from happening?
I, I, I don't, I, I don't see where that's an, an, an issue. I mean, I, I live in, in a, in a complex which has, you know, driveway and a garage and I have never, and, and with multiple units on my street, I've never ever seen somebody park in somebody's driveway that wasn't visiting the person in that driveway. I think that, that's a far-fetched scenario that if I'm going to visit unit five and I see a driveway open down the street at unit 10, I'm going to pull into that driveway. I think, I think that's, that really is a far-fetched scenario that something like that would happen. Uh, it, it.
I, I don't think that's far-fetched at all based on your layout. It, 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 there's really no delineation of, of these parking spaces. It's just, it's just in front of these garages.
Yeah, the parking spaces are in front of a garage that goes to a unit. I, I think somebody lot, anybody would logically assume that the, that the driveway in front of the garage belongs to the unit where the garage is. It doesn't belong to the public.
Oh, that's a reasonable assumption that if somebody comes and all of the parking spaces that are not tied to garages are full, they might pull into one of those spaces in front of the garage.
So, so it's really no different than, than any other development. In fact, it's no different than the townhouse section of this development where there are garages and driveways and then there's street parking for visitors and for any of the units that don't have a garage. So I, I think, Mr. Healy, your, your point's a good one in that, you know, we should delineate each, each space outside the garage with some sort of striping so that it's clear that that space is affiliated with that garage. But it's, it's going to be, you know, the, 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 the rule of, of the, you know, the the rental community that, you know, those spaces are specific for the person that owns that garage. I mean, I, I agree, it's unusual circumstance that someone would park there though.
I, I, I think that the, absent any striping or signage, even a, a unit number on the garage, I don't think it's far-fetched. I think this is, this is an apartment building. It's not a townhouse. The, the, the garages are lined up right next to each other in a line. There's no way for anybody to know, for visitor to know, driving in there that that's an assigned space to a particular unit. I think at a minimum, at a minimum, if it's unit five, there should be a little, little thing on the garage saying unit five. So they, so somebody's visiting unit 10, they logically know not to park in front of that garage.
Yeah, we, we agree with that.
Absent that, how do they know?
No, we, we, we agree to that and we would agree to, to add that information.
Eight five on the parking space.
I, I, I think the details can be worked out, but I think we can delineate uh the, the garage as it, as it is attached to a particular unit and the space in front of it also belonging to that unit. We can provide appropriate markings.
So I've been listening to all this with uh moderate interest and, and I, I think that sounds like a good, a fairly good solution. I mean, it may, it makes sense, right? With, with the garages not clearly associated with the unit to make sure the people will park there, that, that, that should. And I, I, I think, I think you've, I think you've, that's a fair way to address it, what, what, what you suggested.
And again, we can show that on the plan and I, I think, uh, you know, we can show it to Mr. Healy and when we figure out how we're going to do it and also to CME uh so that they can make sure we, we address that comment so that there's no confusion.
Yep. Um, you know, in the interest of getting through the witnesses and then we can, I mean, this was fine. This is why I allowed this continued discussion because I thought coming back to it at the end um might not be as productive as addressing it as you were going through the Mark's report. Um, Mark, is there anything that, that falls into that category that we need to, that you want to talk uh to the applicant about now or, or if there's anything else?
I, I, I think they've, I think they've provided testimony addressing uh what's in my report. Okay. Absent, absent the variances that they spoke about that they have to get to.
Right, right. Um, you know, I have a few questions later on, but nothing that needs to, needs to be asked now. So Peter, why don't you go ahead to the architect, I think, right?
Right, Mr. I'll, I'll have Mr. Brennan sworn in and if we can also give him the screen uh so that he can uh go over the exhibits.
Hello?
Mr. Brennan, can you raise your right hand for me?
Yes.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, or nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please.
Sure. It's Thomas Brennan, B R E N N A N. Address is 133 McDermott Drive, Suite 200 in Allen, Texas, 75013 and the name of the company is Thomas Brennan Architects. Uh, I am president of Thomas Brennan Architects.
Uh, Mr. Brennan, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, my background is I have a bachelor of architecture from New York Institute of Technology and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for over 30 years.
I would offer the testimony of Mr. Brennan, Mr. Chairman, as a licensed architect.
Yeah, sorry, Peter, I'm muted. Uh, he's exempted.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, are you familiar with the buildings that were previously approved in conjunction with this project?
Uh, yes. In fact, our firm was the uh architect who did the construction documents for the, for that, the townhouses, single family and the clubhouse.
Okay. And, and can you briefly describe the buildings that were previously approved and then we'll get you to put on the screen the buildings that we are proposing and then we can compare them and then we can go over the, the new buildings.
Sure. This last phase that there was, was a, uh, there were three buildings that were uh three stories and they were apartments and they basically um were the last phase. Um, they primarily did not, uh, um, were, they were not built when the townhouses and single families were constructed. So this is where they are now. So.
Okay. And, and what did those buildings look like?
Well, they were three story um tall and there were three of them. And um they were approximately uh a little bit bigger than these buildings here combined. Um, and uh they were just rental apartments.
And with that project, there were no garages. It was all a surface park uh complex?
Correct. It was a surface parking and um that, that's primarily the way the project, uh, I'm, I'm, again, I'm going off of memory. That was a long time ago that I've actually looked at that particular site plan and years ago. So.
Okay. Now can you share with the board your screen uh and the exhibit uh as to what we are proposing with respect to this project?
Sure. Um, yeah, I have uh an assistant who's.
Yeah, could you give Ben, yeah, could you give Ben Led better access to share his screen and then I'll do it?
Okay, well, give me, give me a moment. See, there we go.
So I can preface this by stating that as uh, as was uh presented by Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Schulman, that the site plan went from having um three buildings that were three stories tall and no garages to what we have proposed now is two buildings. And um there are garages underneath the building. So we're providing um some garages for the tenants and basically um it also has the buildings less, less impervious coverage, building coverage, all the items that the engineers had talked about. Um, so for the most part, um, you know, this, this exhibit that we have here, I don't know, do we need to address any markings on the unit or on exhibits or?
Uh, if they were part of the plan set, they, they do not have to be marked specifically, uh, but I assume this is the front elevations of the buildings and, and both buildings are the same, correct?
That is correct. Again, the initial, the initial concept that was presented years ago had 72 units and what we're proposing here now is only 60 units. So you're, you're getting 60 units, a reduction in the number of units, plus you're improving the building and the app, the occupants and their lifestyle, but by providing garages for them as well. So.
Can you indicate to the board what the materials that will be used uh to construct the building, what it will look like? Uh, so that the board uh can understand uh.
Sure. I, I think I'd like to start though with the, with the floor plans if I could, just describing the floor plans.
Sure. And again, these are part of the plan set that was submitted in conjunction with this application and was sheet D3 of your set.
That is correct.
Okay.
And as was described previously, there are 10 one bedroom units and there are 52 bedroom units. The one bedroom units are indicated by the 1B and the two bedroom units are described by 2B, 2B2, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so there are, um, they range from 810 square feet in the one bedroom to 1305 for the two bedroom, the largest two bedroom. And they vary from 1,074, 1263. So there's a good variety of um two bedroom units. All the units are open and airy. They blend the rooms from the kitchen to the living to the dining room. So they feel larger than they are. And, and they also are, are current modern stylings as far as what uh um current renters are, are wanting to, to have in their apartments nowadays. Um, so again, there's 30 units in each building and um they, they have at the very front down here in the lobby, you walk in the front door, you have a, a package room, you have a mailbox area. And then um there's to be a, a leasing fitness area. Um, you walk through those doors. These are secured properties. So you have to have a key fob to get in them. And then you go to the elevator that's there and then you can go to each floor um through the elevator and through a corridor. Um, you can see the individual garages and um from the individual garages, you can walk into the corridor and then go to your elevator and uh then go up to the, the floor, the second, third, fourth floors. And uh there are some storage units that would be uh leased um on that ground floor as well. Uh, so um those would be along the corridors. Uh, if we go move it up a little bit to the second floor if we can. Um, so those, the, the, the second, the upper floors here have the corridor. It also has two fire stairs. So this type of building meets all the life and safety issues that you would find in a building like this. It would have a, uh, the, obviously the fire stairs, which are separated as required by building code. It would also have an NFPA 13R sprinkler system throughout the entire building. And um the, out on the balconies, all these units have balconies. As you can see, the little balcony parts that there. And there is a um, the heating and air conditioning unit is a magic pack unit. And that's a self-contained heating and air conditioning unit that is out on that balcony. So um there's no need for onsite, uh, multiple onsite um condensing units or, or any unsightly units up on the attic or up in, up on the roof. Um, it's all self-contained. So um, but that, that's the, as you can see, that's how the, the floor plan would work and then we can jump to the elevations. So the, the elevations have um um, but uh some, starting at the base around the whole base is a stone base, a cultured stone type base. And then um there's uh horizontal siding, lap siding. There's accents of uh AZAC panels and white trim, et cetera, that would be uh accentuated in the detailing. And then on the third floor would be a vinyl impressions, which is a, like a shingle look. Um, and also in the gables, we introduced um the board and batten um detailing that would give it some interest up there. So the roof is a shingle ply roof, uh timberline GAF, one of those whichever one they develop or you end up um installing. Um, and um that's, for the most part, that's what we have as far as the elevations go. And uh I guess we can talk maybe about the, the height of this thing. Um, if we want to at this point, or you want to show the, the rendering first and maybe that would be good to.
I, I'd like to, but I, again, we did submit it to the town. I don't know if Mr. Healy received the card rendering and if, if he has not received it, we can't show it. I don't know if Mr. Healy received the card rendering and if, if he has not received it, we can't show it, uh.
Yeah.
We did not receive it.
I, all right. Uh, as a matter of fact, I went through my records, it was submitted last week, but somehow it, in this world of technology, they, they don't always get where they're supposed to get. So we won't go with the rendering, but I, I guess you described the colors and materials.
Yeah, they, they, I'll describe them, uh, you know, basically if we blow that back up again to the, to the screen, the stone is a, a neutral colored stone, you know, it's like a brown, grayish brown type look. The, uh, siding, the horizontal siding is a cream colored siding with the white trim, it shows very nicely. And then of course, the, um, the vinyl impressions are a more of a, a tan brown type color. And then that, you know, that goes with the, the roof, that's a more of a grayish color, so. Yeah, it, the, the rendering shows, shows it more in, in, in perspective in 3D, so, you know. The, the, but it, it also was to have the multiple color changes and multiple interests, so it just wasn't all monotone, so. So it, it's, uh, it's, the, it's aesthetics of the building, not only that there's movement within the elevation that things move in and out, there's balconies, there's recessed areas, there's, uh, um, windows that have divided lights in the upper portions, which is a, a nice design feature. And, you know, it, it has a lot of interest in elevation, you know? That's pretty much, I can see is my presentation.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions. The first question is, uh, as you are aware, uh, we are requesting a variance for the height of the building. Can you indicate, first of all, what is the height of the building to, to the roof line before we get to the roof itself?
Yes, the, to the peak of the roof from grade is fifty-four feet, eight inches.
Okay, and, and what is the height to the top of the fourth story without the roof?
Without the roof was, um, I think about forty-two feet, something like that.
Okay, so, uh, and you chose to have a peaked roof, uh, and therefore the height up to fifty-four feet, correct?
That is correct, yeah, the, if, you, you know, the aesthetics of having a peak roof uh, or hip roof in this application is a lot more appealing as far as an aesthetic is than a flat roof, commercial type building. I mean, if this was in a, in urban center in the middle of the city somewhere, this is the country, this is the outdoor, you know, out in the suburbs, uh, this is what the, you know, people want to see out in the suburbs, so.
Okay, but, but the building could have been built and could have met the height requirements with a flat roof?
With a flat roof, but it would not have the same appeal, um, as, as the hip roof as we have shown it now, so.
Okay, uh, the other thing is was alluded to by Mr. Schulman and I think Mr. Hamilton. We are going to be eliminating a few of those garage spaces. Can you indicate, uh, to the board where that's going to be and why that's going to be?
Sure, if we go back to that area, I think the, the best solution that we, uh, encountered is that we would eliminate garage space four and five and we would include that in the amenity space. So in, and one side, one building would have just the leasing office shown as is. And then the other side would have an amenity space that would be what says fitness leasing office and then would include garage four and garage five, which would, would be, that would be plenty of space for an amenity center there, so.
All right, and, and for the record, and, and, uh, Mr. Healy indicated and there, there, there is an ordinance requirement that there be a certain amount of amenity space. And with respect to this building or these buildings, uh, although there is a clubhouse in the project as a whole, uh, this, the tenants of these buildings will have their own amenity space in these buildings. Uh, they will have, and the paperwork is still being negotiated between the parties, but they will have access to the swimming pool, uh, which is part of the clubhouse and attached to the clubhouse. But these two buildings will have their own amenities, so they will not have the need to use the other building for, uh, exercise or for gathering or anything else. They will be contained within these buildings.
Yeah, there'll be a, a community space, you know, as described in this square footage that would be here that would accommodate these two buildings, so.
Thank you. Uh, I have no further questions of this witness. And I will now go back to Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you.
So, so I'd like to then talk about the variances, the two variances that you've heard already in testimony. The first is regard to building height fifty feet, three stories required. And what we're proposing, as you heard from Mr. Brennan, is fifty-four point six seven feet or eight inches and a four-story building. Uh, we also are asking for relief from the buffer in two locations. One along the northerly property line, um, and one along the southerly line. On the north side, we're asking for relief because of an encroachment of a wall within that buffer. And then on the south side, we're asking for relief because of the encroachment of an emergency access route. And I, again, I'll, I'll talk about that in detail. So those released that we're requesting are C2 variances, which are where our purpose of planning as outlined in the municipal land use law would be advanced by the granting of the deviation and the benefits would substantially outweigh any detriment. So starting with the height and the positive criteria first, the purposes that we believe are advanced are the promotion of public health, uh, public safety morals and general welfare as well as promotion of a desirable visual environment. The ordinance allows for, as you've heard, the original approval was for a three-story walk-up apartment at a fifty-foot height. Our proposal promotes general welfare in that we are providing for the senior residents in elevated building, an elevator building, not elevated, uh, with garage spaces for roughly two-thirds of the building residents, a little less than two-thirds. Uh, that's certainly more desirable and a safe alternative, uh, for the future residents of this community. In addition, by adding garages, uh, we add to the aesthetic value of the site. Uh, we're going to be removing what would have to be large, a large parking area, which is part of the original plan for this that had all surface parking. Uh, and by, and providing covered parking will certainly be, uh, an added benefit. Now, we didn't choose the four-story lightly, we know, we looked at what our options are when, when we first started designing this site, you know, it, it could have been designed in the same manner that it was originally with three-story walk-up buildings that all surface parking. But again, we thought this was a better alternative, it better met the needs of the market in, in twenty twenty-one. And we certainly feel, uh, it's appropriate in this, in this, um, situation. Now, we also have to show the negative criteria with any of the variances. So we have to show that there will not be substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, and there will not be substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. With regard to the public good, that's when you look at what's the impact of what we're proposing to the neighborhood. In this case, the closest units or residents to what's being proposed are, is, uh, is one of the buildings on the Renaissance community, uh, directly to our south. That is a three-story multifamily building, um, it's rough, it's better than a hundred feet from our property line and certainly, um, substantially more to the buildings that are being proposed, uh, which are proposed at sixty feet off our property line. That area between our property line and Renaissance is a wooded area. So the substantial existing buffer and we're going to provide buffering as well, which I'll talk about in a minute, both in terms of preserving the existing vegetation for a portion of that buffer and then for proposing additional plantings, uh, within that area. That building sits approximately three foot lower. Their first floor is about three foot less than what our first floor is of the two buildings closest to them. So again, they're a little bit lower than us, um, and from what, I'm sorry, from what's proposed. So then we look at the buffer itself. Excuse me one second, I apologize. I'm sorry, before we look at the buffer, I don't think I addressed yet the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And again, uh, what we're asking for is consistent with the zone plan, we have these two minor variances. So we don't believe that we're impacting that, uh, that zone plan in any way. Now, with regard to the buffer, uh, first, let's look at the southern property line and that is the buffer.
Bill, before you start talking, perhaps we should put that exhibit back up so we can have the work and see where the buffer variances are.
I think.
I'm sorry, that's a great idea, Peter, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I don't know if we can get the screen back to, uh, Jacob and Jacob put, can put the site plan up. Uh, and in talking with the, about the buffer variances, you can relate to the site plan.
So looking at the site plan, let's first look at the buffer on the southerly property line. So that is the area between the property line and the ends of the building. You see, there's a fifty-foot buffer line indicated on the plans and then the buildings themselves are located sixty point five feet, um, distant from the property line. The fire access road right now encroaches within that buffer line. This was a, um, in addition to the plan that was, per a comment originally from the fire official at a, uh, TRC meeting that we, that was held, um, probably a year ago now, maybe more. So we did put in a fire lane which provides him and the fire department with three hundred and sixty degree access to the buildings, which, um, is quite unusual, but again, it provides substantial and significant, you know, safety to the residents because of the fire access. Mr. Uh, Haas has indicated in his most recent letter that he would like to see that eighteen-foot lane that showed on this exhibit here, the site plan, to be increased to twenty-four feet. So that it not only serves as, um, as a, a way that the trucks can maneuver around the building, but it's wide enough that they could put their outriggers, uh, also outside the building. So what that does is that decreases the area of the buffer, not that the buildings are closer than fifty for itself, uh, is smaller in terms of vegetation and proposed vegetation, uh, that we can add, uh, to it. So, again, we don't feel, for similar reasons to the building height, that this in any way impacts the neighborhood. Again, there's significant buffer already, uh, on the adjacent property. We have planting proposed along, uh, the south side of both buildings. There's limited exposure of the buildings to, to that property line as well. Those buildings are roughly, um, eighty foot wide. So the total exposure of building is around a hundred and sixty feet. And going back to the plan that was originally approved, we had two buildings along that property line that were parallel to the property line with a total building of exposure of roughly double that. So the, so really there's little exposure to that buffer. Uh, and again, we understood and agree with Mr. Healy's comments with regard to the planting and we'd be happy to supplement the planting to try to mitigate, um, the relief. Now, looking up onto the north property line and Jake, if you could pan up a little bit, you see that there is also shown a fifty-foot buffer line distant from the property line. There's a slight encroachment where Jake is now pointing to of a retaining wall, uh, that, that goes into that buffer. You know, this relief is de minimis, it's, it's really minor for the most part. In addition to the fifty-foot buffer, we have considerably more than fifty feet, uh, to the proposed improvements, whether it's, uh, the dog walk, the parking area or the access roads. So we believe that, uh, this is a, is an appropriate approval in terms of the positive criteria. And that from a negative criteria perspective, um, it does not in any way impact adversity on the neighborhood and it won't impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan as again, this is really a minor deviation and de minimis in nature.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have no further questions on the two variances and I, at this juncture, will conclude my testimony. I do have, uh, our environmental consultant available if there's any questions that come up. But I, I don't think in looking at the discussion and the reports and everything, everything can be dealt with with staff regarding environmental. But she is here to answer any questions. I will at this juncture let the board, uh, have access to my three witnesses and can ask away as they so please.
Thanks, Peter. And so, um, yeah, let's open it up to board comments and questions. So anybody, uh, from the board who'd like to go first?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
In, in, in the, uh, environmental report, there's a photo of a pond. So where exactly, and how, are you addressing that pond at all or is it totally being untouched?
This is Bill, I believe the pond you're referring to is off-site and, and not being touched by this application.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's in, it's that, you, you've got the report up. I think that's what you just pulled up. It's an Eco Sciences report.
Oh yeah, I was going to, uh, take a look, see exactly which pond you're referring to. I may need a minute. Do you recall what page it was on?
It's photo, um, fourteen, so I guess that's. Pages aren't. But so starting at page twenty-six, I guess, in that document. I mean, I assumed all of this was part of your, the property, because why else would you have included all this?
A lot of this information was provided because it's, it's part of the entire development. In two thousand and four, there was an LOI that was done, there were wetland buffers, uh, that were filed. There were conservation easements that were filed, uh, in conjunction with the project, meaning the entire development. This portion of the property, as was testified to by Mr. Schulman, uh, basic, other than a, a small buffer area, this site has no ponds, no streams of, of any kind on it. And this is basically cleared land and has been cleared land since the, uh, early two thousands. But, but the environmental information that was provided deals with the entire tract.
So it goes on, I mean, there's, there's discussion here about an old home that's being knocked down. So none of that really is, is part of this application, you're not knocking this old.
That all happened already.
That all happened fifteen years ago.
All right. And then my next question is just that these apartment building, is this fifty-five and older housing?
It, it is age restricted, the whole development is age restricted, yes.
Okay, but those people won't be allowed to use Sterling Point's clubhouse?
Clubhouse, they will be allowed to use the pool, uh, and they will have their own gathering areas within the buildings.
All right, and the only access is from Spang, is it Spangenberg Road?
It's, it's, it's actually, I think pronounced Spanjimberg Lane. It was named after a now deceased police officer here in town, but it's Spanjimberg Lane. That's the only access to the site.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thanks, Carol. And, and the other board members would like to comment? Or ask any questions?
Yes, Chairman, this is, uh, uh, Charles Brown. I have a question for, for Peter and the team regarding the sidewalk that was not shown connecting on the opposite side of the street near basin two, which I think is going to be removed now. Not basin two being removed, but the, um, the driveway, the turnaround, the cul-de-sac is going to be removed. So I think for consistency's sake, as is the case throughout the entire development, we should continue the sidewalk on both sides of the street that will reduce conflict points between the pedestrians and the number of motorists coming in and out of that site.
We, we will connect our development to the existing sidewalk, develop sidewalks that are within the rest of the community, so that uh, it will be a continuous sidewalk.
On both sides of the street, correct, Peter?
If there's, if there's sidewalks on both sides of the street, through the rest of the community, that's what we will do.
Thank you.
Peter, um, if I may, um, the sidewalk on the south side of Spang, Spangenberg Lane is getting, getting awfully close to the conservation easement, and I'm not sure if it, it would be possible to construct that without encroaching on that easement. That would be my concern.
Do you mind pulling it up, Jake, to show us how close?
Let's see. Um. There we go, share. Screen.
The reason for that comment, there's going to be a considerable amount of cars coming in and out. Um, and you can reduce the conflict point between those cars and the seniors that will be walking in this community by having sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Got it. Um, I mean, I could definitely take a look at it, and I'm just trying to, um, you know, think of you know, what issues may arise, and you could see the site, that this square marker here is the conservation easement, or these square markers. Um, we may be able to squeeze it in.
Yeah, you have enough space, even if you get rid of the buffer, the, the grass buffer between the pavement itself and, um, the roadway, perhaps as you get closer to the easement area, it's just about the, uh, the back of the curb as opposed to having a landscape buffer in between it.
See, all right. All right, you just take a look, better look, but thanks. Yeah, makes sense.
The other question, I, I had a question regarding the, the dumpster area. Um, maybe this is for the landscape architect in terms of how it will be lighted. Um, I have a concern, a safety concern regarding people um, placing their trash there at night, and the fact that it bumps up against um, this wooded area. I like the fact that you do have this, this, uh, fifty foot required. I mean, this, uh, decorative stone area, the grass paper, my bad, fire access. Uh, but how is lighting, how will lighting be handled near the dumpster area?
Before you get to that, that decorative, uh, that paved area for the fire lane now will be actually, uh, not a uh, will be a fully paved and will not be porous pavement as we had originally proposed, because the fire marshal wanted that fire lane to be paved, so I don't want to cause any confusion there, but but, uh, Mr. Hamilton, you can deal with the dumpster and the lighting.
Yeah, Jake, if you could pull up the lighting plan. So as you see by this plan, that the, the little plus marks indicate the foot candle limit. Uh, and there are two um, D light fixtures located on the two garages closest to the dumpsters, and if you look at the foot candle limit right in front of the dumpster, for example, you see one point zero and zero point eight uh, on the right side, and then on the left side, you see zero point nine and zero point seven. That's a pretty good foot candle. That's a pretty good lighted area. I mean, in general, point five foot candle is, is kind of a full moonlight. Um, so it's fairly bright. So, so these dumpsters will be, um, you know, residents will have plenty of light when they enter these dumpsters in the evening.
Mr. William, uh, Mr. Hamilton, my concern isn't necessarily the front of the dumpster, it's the back of the dumpster. That is the place in which an intruder could perhaps, um, hide, and as you see, uh, when you look behind the dumpster, it's like point two, point three. Um, also near what I perceive to be an entrance to some of the buildings. It is one point two, but then it drops off considerably down to oh, to point three. And so I'm simply asking for a slight increase in lighting so that the area behind the, the dumpster isn't as dark.
Yeah, we'd be happy to accommodate that either by altering the pattern for, um, the fixture B that's opposite the parking spaces, uh, which may shine to the back, or right now we have what's indicated as F lights, which are baller type lights along the walkway. Those could be extended a little behind where the parking spaces are, and maybe that would provide a little more light for behind the dumpster area, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. No other comments or questions?
Thanks, Charles. Anybody else, um, a comment or question?
Are we going to address the buffering?
I think they did, um, in terms of what they responded to, uh, in Bill's testimony, uh, toward the end there, Ted, uh, and they agreed to uh, that was actually going to be one of my questions, really, it's sort of the fourth bullet point that Mark has on his report, page three, to increase it where it's thinner. Uh, I assume that, you know, they, they're going to do that, and they, they, they testified that they would do that. Um, while they were talking about the relief and the justification for the relief, uh, for the, for the width of the buffer, um, you know, that seems to be sort of a, um, you know, either there's woods there that obviously we wouldn't have cleared for a buffer or for a retaining wall or something, or the retaining wall itself. So I, I thought that, 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 um, that was fairly well explained, and then what I was going to ask for was increased, um, landscaping where they could put it, and, and they had agreed to that. So I was, that was actually going to be one of my questions. I was satisfied with that, um, response.
Okay, I just, you know, I thought it was buffered enough on the northwest, but it looked kind of skimpy on the south and maybe one row of evergreens between the uh, the driveway and the existing wood.
Bill, Bill, did I, did I represent that fairly enough? I mean, can you, can you, you can?
Yes, you, you did, Mr. Chairman. We, we, we agree with, um, with your planner. We're going to uh, increase the, the density of the planting in that buffer area uh, in the areas outside of, you know, the emergency access route. But the areas that are being disturbed already, obviously, if there's existing vegetation there, we're going to keep it. Uh, but wherever we can, we're going to add vegetation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but it just, can you just explain the, the type and extent, just rather than adding vegetation's a little vague?
Sure, so, so towards the edge of the wooded area, which is, um, a little more shady, because this, remember, this is the southern side of the site. We'd use, um, trees such as American holly, understory, evergreen trees that would function. Uh, there's not a lot of room there, so as you get closer to the building, we would put in um, probably more something like an arborvitae or something a little more columnar, but at the same time, evergreen that would provide year round, uh, year round buffering.
And how do you protect them against being eaten by deer?
Well, that's, that's difficult with any plant. I mean, the holly is good, because, um, deers have trouble with hollies and the, uh, and the pointed leaves.
Winter.
What's that, my, I'm sorry?
They ate my holly this winter.
Yeah, when deers are hungry, they'll eat anything. Um, and, and certainly arborvitae's are, are food that they are, you know, are shrubs that they like. So, uh, we'll do our best to pick deer resistant as best we can, but I, I will say that deers are, are pretty you know, they're, they're pretty disconcerting about what they eat.
So would you say that that would extend the length of that, uh, that fire access road?
It would extend the length of the fire access road, and it would also extend, uh, around the wall on the northern property line.
Okay, and the trees would be six foot minimum, I assume?
Sixty. Foot minimum, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
So it may, may be a few years since, since I was chair of the shade tree commission, but there, there's seldom anything more disheartening to look at a development and to see the bottom three to four feet of a row of, of arborvitae, um, like a flamethrower had been taken to it, which deer browse. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's species, you know, a, and I do realize this is a wooded area. Um, there is going to be deer, um, but to the extent possible. I don't know if there's anything that can be done or a different species. I agree, the hollies are probably the most resistant, just because of the type of foliage they have. Um, not as amenable to deer, but arborvitae, so you go into any development in this township and the lower three or four feet are missing, which sort of leads to death of the rest of the arborvitae, as well as really kind of defeats your purpose of screening. So, I mean, truthfully, I, I would rather see a deciduous tree, um, that could be somewhat protected uh, there. Um, yeah, sure, it would lose its leaves in the fall, but, uh, in winter, but, um, you know, it would be there the rest of the year. So.
Well, we, we can confer with Mister Healy, Mister Chairman, and come up with something I think that's acceptable.
Well, it sounds good. I mean, I realize the challenges, but um, anything else from any other board member? The only other thing I was going to say is, it was brought very early in the testimony about making the lighting LED, and, and I like that idea. I, I, I think that's what you were intending to do, or rather than put sodium, just because the rest of the development sodium, I, I think we should have be as efficient as we can be. The only comment that I had of the ones that I noted that wasn't addressed otherwise.
I believe, I believe the testimony from Mister Hamilton was that they were going to be LED lights, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Heard that, yeah.
I think the question was whether they were going to meet the style of the existing fixtures, or whether they're going to be permitted to be a different style. And they said they would comply with whatever the board wanted.
I mean, I think they should be consistent as possible. I mean, I haven't, haven't exactly, you know, browsed lighting displays lately, but I, I assume that there's probably you know, almost anything you could want, and the only difference is the source of the, of the light being LED rather than sodium, so. Yeah, I mean, it should try to match and not be all that different, but.
I noticed that you have a charging station for which I praise you, because that's something we're starting to ask for. Although I would really prefer that you had two, one to, to each of the uh, sets of parking there.
Or at least the capability, as we'd done in an earlier application, I think, four weeks ago, to, 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 to extend, expand it if need be. Um, when, when Charles didn't mention it, I assumed they complied, uh, but, um, yeah, I, I, I would endorse that.
I, I think we can run the conduit, you, you know, and again, it's a fine line that we're running, and, and maybe in the future that there's going to be more of a need for charging stations. I don't know if it is today, but you know, you don't want to lose parking spaces because you have a charging station and nobody's using it, and that now we have a parking space that's being unused. So I think if we can make the parking spaces or a few additional ones capable of handling charging stations, uh, that would make sense when we're running the conduit out there, but not put them in unless there is a desire or need by the tenants for those, uh, charging stations.
Yeah, no, I.
Number of electric vehicles is going to keep increasing.
Yeah, no, it is, and I, I, I think at least the expandability is, is important. Um, and, and so I, I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, sure, the more you can put in, the better, but I mean, we, we already had a sort of an extensive parking discussion, and I don't want to reopen, so I think, I think that's fine. Um, I, I mean, the market will dictate the need, right?
A, a, and again, I mean, we're leasing these apartments, and if there's tenants that have electric vehicles, and that becomes important in, in trying to get our buildings leased, uh, we can create the charging stations for the tenants.
No, it's just, it's, it's a lot easier to put, at least put the wiring in when the initial construction.
That, that, that we agree to.
Okay, any other board questions? Um, if not, I'd like to open to the public.
Mister Chairman, just I have one question. Um, so I heard testimony that, uh, the architect indicated that some of the parking spaces were going to be eliminated. How, how many spaces, was that correct, and how many spaces would be eliminated in total?
It was going to be two garages would be eliminated.
Two garages, okay. And that's total of the, that's, is it in one particular building?
Uh, Mister Brennan, is, are we eliminating two in each building, I believe, just to confirm?
Uh, no, pretty much, I, way I've described it was that we would have, uh, we would keep the leasing office in building number one, since, since that would be the first building, and the leasing office would be required for that building, and then in building number two, we would, uh, eliminate the leasing office there, and we would put the, we would eliminate the two garage spaces, but the driveway spaces in front of them would still be, uh, onsite. So you would still, you would only eliminate two garage spaces, two parking spaces.
Okay, so that would mean the total number of spaces would be instead of one twenty-one, one nineteen. Is that correct? Okay, and then what I'd suggest is while the public, um, the public is going to have an opportunity to ask questions, um, and, uh, or provide comments, if the engineer could do some quick math, because the uh, the parking calcs have to be based on the, the, uh, fifty, the split of fifty-two bedroom and one, I'm sorry, ten, fifty-two bedroom and ten one bedroom. Uh, they could just confirm, because that's going to slightly increase the number of required up from one fourteen. So if somebody could confirm that the, the development would still comply with RSIS.
It would still comply.
What would be the resulting number then be?
One hundred and eighteen.
Okay, so the parking requirement goes up to one eighteen, and the number goes down to one nineteen, but you still comply. Yes, that's what I needed to confirm. Thank you. Um, so before we open to the public, I just want to remind the public that, uh, when we do open it up to you, you, you have the opportunity at this point, if you're in, uh, WebEx, to do the raised hand function, uh, and if you're calling in, you could press star three. So this is your time to, to do that if you want to ask questions or make comments.
Well, we need to make a motion to open it and second and approve it, so I'll do that. Uh, let's, let's move, let's move to open, uh, Carol seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Hi. Okay. Now we're good.
Okay, so we, I do see some hands going up. I'm going to unmute David Dockery. Okay, Mister Dockery, I, I do, uh, you're unmuted. Do you want to ask questions and/or make statements?
Hi, good evening. Uh, you know, I, I simply would like to make a comment. Um, again, my name is David Dockery, D O C K E R Y. Um, I am from the law firm of Becker and Polyakov, uh, and our law firm, uh, represents the Sterling Point, uh, HOA. Um, our address is, uh, seventeen seventy-six on the Green, sixty-seven East Park Place, Suite eight hundred, Moorestown, uh, New Jersey. Um, my client, uh, the HOA had asked me to attend, uh, this evening's, uh, application, and I was very pleased to see all the information, uh, presented, uh, this evening. Uh, the only limited comment I would have, um, in, and, and I believe, um, that, um, the applicant's attorney, Mister Landford, already addressed this, was regarding the access, uh, to the Sterling Point, uh, pool, uh, which, which was part of Mister Healy's, uh, memo, and I think his representation and comment with regards to that use is accurate. There is still an access license agreement, uh, the fine points being negotiated, but that, that will be, uh, moving forward um, with regards to use of the pool, but not the clubhouse. And if the board has any questions for me, I'm, I'm also happy to answer as counsel for the, uh, adjacent. And if the board has any questions for me, I'm I'm also happy to answer as counsel for the adjacent HOA.
Okay, thank you, does the board have any questions?
I don't. Very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have somebody calling in. Okay, so call in, the number starts nine oh eight eight one two. Going to unmute you, and if you could indicate your name and your address. And indicate if you have comments or and or questions. Okay, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Yes, my name is Robert Wilson, I live at two thirty-six Cedar Grove Lane. And I am literally right across the street from where the. Street is at, the street access is. I'm concerned about congestion with traffic with another hundred and twenty cars coming out during rush hour. I'm also worried about when, well, I watched the entire thing. And I saw that when the young man Sherman said that there were three ponds. Or several ponds. Are the, have they been tested to see if there are any endangered species there? And if not, that needs to be done. The other, the other thing is. How, what is the starting point of the. Rent for the apartment? And that's all I have to ask.
If I may briefly respond, first of all, I think Mr. Schulman's testimony is that there's two new basins. That are being detention basins that are being constructed in conjunction with this project, they don't exist. There is nothing on this site that is being developed that has any ponds, so there's nothing that needs to be tested. With respect to the vehicles, there was an original traffic study done in conjunction with this application. As I indicated in my opening statement, this site was already approved but for seventy-two units. Traffic studies were done and were actually decreasing the number of units, which would mean that there was, there will be less traffic than was anticipated when this. Project was approved. And and the final question regarding the price, whatever the market will bear at the time these units are constructed, I don't think that the. Owner at this juncture would have a price point for these units.
He also had a question about endangered species, can somebody speak to that?
That's what, that's what I answered, he 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 indicated that Mr. Schulman said that there were some ponds on the property that needed to be tested, the ponds. Are not ponds, they're detention basins, there are no ponds on the property. So therefore, there are no endangered species on the six acre site that we are developing.
But you wanna stock those with trout or something, that'd be a real draw, I think.
What, the detention basins?
Yeah, I mean, if you got any anglers, your market is cornered.
They're not going to be permanent ponds.
Well, there goes that idea.
Okay, so we do have somebody else, another member of the public, if I could just request that those who have already spoken, if they could. Lower their hand, so Mr. Dockery, since you're on WebEx, if you could lower your hand, there's a button there. And the caller we just, thank you, and the caller we just spoke to, if you press star three again, you'll lower your hand, I just wanna make sure we keep track of. Those who have, who still want to speak, thank you. Alright, so next speaker is seven three two. Eight five nine, I'm I'm you right now. Go ahead, should you just give us your name and your your address and indicate if you have comments and or questions, please?
Sure, my name is Nancy Nelson, Nelson is N E L S E N. I live in Renaissance at forty-two oh seven Avery Court, and I have four questions. The first one is, or concern, actually. I, if I understood correctly, you mentioned that the buildings. Are going to be about three feet higher than the Renaissance buildings. Plus, you have the emergency access driveway, which is going to be paved. I'm concerned about drainage. We already have more than enough drainage on, you know, on our property. And I'm concerned that the way, the location of the buildings and the driveway. And the change in the grade is going to give us more of a drainage problem.
Okay, if I could stop you there and 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 we'll have the applicant to answer that question.
I guess I'll I'll take this one. So, we did perform some drainage calculations, indicating that the. Flows from the site will be reduced. We did not take into account the the fire officials' comments. With regard to the expansion and material of the fire lane, however. We will revise our calculations to do that, and if it needs to be something like permeable pavement that. Flow that doesn't really produce additional flow, it absorbs water, then that's what it will, that's what it'll be.
Can you speak to, yeah, you are going to have a number of detention basins that's that's going to capture the runoff and. Hold it for a certain period of time and treat it, etc., so. Can you just give a quick summary again of what you're doing for drainage?
Oh, yes, so the, all of the rainwater from the, the stormwater from the site. Is going to be directed to those detention basins. And the Department of Environmental Protection. Has rules which are incorporated into the township ordinance. Which require us, require the development to reduce the flows coming from the site. And we. We submitted reports showing how we intend to comply with those and. Any modifications to the site will have to also comply with with those requirements. And in addition, we'll also be addressing water quality, so the quality of the water from the site will be increased. So I think you'll, after it's constructed, there'll be less water coming. Not, I think, there there will have to be less water coming off of the site after the site is constructed, or not as fast.
Okay, so any excess water from the southern side. Which is near, you know, my area that I'm concerned about, that's going to be sent over to the retention basins? The retention basins are north of the buildings, I'm talking about drainage on the southern aspect.
So, based on what I saw, the. This slope in this actually slopes downward from, from south to north in that area. And the floor of the building in. The building immediately south of the site is actually a few feet above our site, so. The water wouldn't be able to flow in that direction, even if we wanted it to.
And Jake, if I could just add that the roof leaders are all tied into that detention system, so. Any of the rainwater that falls either on a roof or on a paved surface is gonna go to that basin away from. The southerly direction.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sorry. No, go ahead, please.
My next question pertains to the easement on Avery Court for the fire. Department, exactly what is involved with that? I'm told that there'll be a gate there. That only the emergency will be allowed to open, but how, what happens on. The Avery Court side of that gate?
Now, this, this is a new fire lane that is being constructed behind the two buildings that we are constructing. And that fire lane will be gated so that only the fire department can have access to that fire lane. This is, that's a new fire lane, it has nothing to do with the fire lane on Avery Court.
Okay, so what is the easement for on Avery Court? It's listed in the. Planning and zoning report.
Are you, you're referring to Mr. Healy's report?
And and it mentions Avery Court?
Yeah, on the site map it does, yes.
She, she, Mark, she may be referring. Waterline easement and emergency access easement from the Renaissance development connecting to the old. Whatever the old plan or plat was for the original Sterling Point. I have it up, I have it up on the screen, it's it's the the final plat for Sterling Point.
If you want, I could share my screen to show what, which one she's talking about. So I believe she's referring to this, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, if you open up your plat, open up the plat, it shows it better.
The plat, oh.
Can you put that on the screen?
It is.
It is, yeah, we're having trouble with WebEx, that's why I'm on the phone.
That's just not, but if you scroll over to. I don't know what direction to say, yeah, so there's Avery Court, there's no connection Avery Court.
Okay, so there isn't going to be. A gate there?
No, there's, there's, there's no connection from this development to Renaissance whatsoever. The site plan, the emergency access drive that that that's been discussed tonight is wholly contained within this site. It goes around the proposed buildings to provide emergency vehicle vehicle access around the proposed buildings, but there are no proposed connections on this site plan. Outside to any of the developments outside.
Okay, great, thank you, and just one last thing. In, I'm in building six, and we received notification, and a few residents of building five did. But not all of the people in building five. You know, received notification. And I believe they're within the two hundred feet.
I I can only respond to say that I am provided a list by the township of the properties within two hundred feet. We served all of the properties that are contained on that list. And we submitted proof of service to the Secretary of the Board in advance of the hearing.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we have nine oh eight eight one two, I'll unmute you now. Again, if you could provide your name and address and indicate if you're going to make a statement or comments. Okay, go ahead.
I'm Robert Wilson, and I live on Cedar Grove Lane, right across the street from the. Where they come out onto Cedar Grove Lane. And I, my question that I asked earlier wasn't answered about. About the congestion problem, the traffic congestion.
I I believe I I I did answer the question. As I indicated, this proposal this evening is a reduction of units from what was previously approved. The original application.
That, that is not an answer, sir, that is not an answer, sir, because it's still more congestion than we have now.
Yeah, but let me, let me take this a little, Peter, so, so. This whole development was approved in two thousand and three. With that level of traffic and the amount of.
There was not the amount of traffic there is now.
Well, sure, because other developments have happened around it, but you you can't. Hold one person responsible for that, or one party responsible for that. This development, which is what we're talking about right now, was approved at a certain density. And this part of it was never built, now when they're coming back to build it, they've actually reduced the density. So I I can't disagree with you that there's more traffic in front of your house on Cedar Grove Lane than there was in two thousand and three. Be a fool to dispute that. All I can say is with the. What with what we're allowed to consider tonight, which is this particular development. The level of traffic that was anticipated back in two thousand and three, when it was originally approved. Will be less because this section of it will be less dense than originally planned. And that's really the best answer I can give.
Mr. Orsted, Chairman, I I can just add that this is a permitted use. And under the municipal land use law, you cannot create an issue over the traffic generated from a permitted use, so. While traffic may be something that's going to be generated from this, it's anticipated by your zoning ordinance. That that traffic is acceptable.
Yeah, and I wasn't even gonna pull that out necessarily, Peter, only because of the fact that, while that's certainly true. At least back in two thousand and three, when this was originally approved, we had anticipated however many buildings and however many units that has now been reduced. And, you know, I can't, I can't, I can't deny that the traffic that he sees is is greater. And this will add to it because it's a portion of the development that wasn't built before. But it was approved back in two thousand and three, so. Yeah, I mean, I guess if you wanna look on the bright side, it's not as dense as what was approved in two thousand and three.
And as a resident, I would like to oppose this.
Duly noted.
Okay. I don't, won't make a difference, but. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, I'm scanning. I do not see anybody at this point, if if a few more seconds to see any stragglers, but I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand.
Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and thank everyone in the public for their questions and comments. I'll make a motion to close the hearing to the public. Favor? Can tell it's getting late, we gotta delay, and I don't think it's technical. So any other board comments or questions, and Peter, I'll give you a minute to summarize if you want.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I just wanna provide a quick, I I, part of the. I've been communicating with somebody from Mr. Lanford's office, I I think there clearly was some type of mishap. We were provided proof that the email was sent, neither Christine nor I received it, so. Seems like both Mr. Lanford and myself were correct, they sent it, we never got it, so I guess things happen. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
And there's somebody out there that's looking at colored renderings of this and wondering what the hell? Alright, thanks, Mark. Okay, Peter, turn it over to you for a minute.
Yeah, very briefly, again, I I thank the board for their time and consideration. I I think what the board is reviewing this evening is a far better plan and was approved in two thousand and three. Not only because of the reduction in the number of units, but because of the reduction in the amount of coverage on the property. The variances that we are seeking in the scheme of things, as testified to by Mr. Hamilton, are justified and see to variances. I do think they also make the project a better project. And I would respectfully request that the site plan be granted, and that the two variances that we are seeking be granted. And we will agree to comply with all of the conditions that were requested. And we will agree to comply with all of the conditions that were requested by the board members and staff in their reports, uh, both prior to this meeting and tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Um, so, um, I'll entertain a motion, um, this year, on this, uh, application. So maybe I'll take a stab at, so I'm gonna move to approve with the two C two variances, uh, for, for, um, building height and buffer. Uh, and that the applicant, uh, comply with all the staff reports, um, and, um, uh, comments that have been rendered tonight, most notably would be um, extension of sidewalks on both sides, um, of, of the streets, um, to the extent that the, um, buffer will allow, um, we think we can get it in there. Um, the LED lighting, um, and the fixtures, uh, lighting fixtures to, um, resemble as closely, uh, as possible, that already in the development. The additional, um, landscaping and buffering, uh, where possible. Um, the, uh, numbering or, and striping of parking spaces um, outside the garages to make, to make those clear that they're associated with that owner of that garage. Um, I missing anything? Peter? Oh, right, the elimination of the cul-de-sac.
Uh, addition of conduit for additional charging stations in the future?
I think I said that. But if I didn't, yes.
I said it again.
There you go. And I think that's it. Mark, anything else? Anything else from you that I should
No, I think you, I think you got the, if, there might be a detail or two, but I think you got all the big ones.
Okay, that's what I was trying for. So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Carol. And Christine, pull the board. Christine, if you are, you're on mute.
Here, Christine.
We're so close.
Mike died.
I, I had the same issue last night, North Brunswick, and I wound up that the attorney wound up pulling the board.
At least Mark's there. He, she can move over there.
Okay.
There you go.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
I can hear Carl, uh, let me see. Carl Halk?
Yes.
Uh, Charles Brown?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt? And Chairman Orsady?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Mark, Christine, any other business?
Okay, you guys are, can you still hear me?
We can.
Okay, we have a meeting on the second, just so you're aware. It's gonna be a work session. Uh, I don't currently have any hearings, so it should, you know, whatever the work session, however long that takes, that how long will be, but I don't have any hearings. Um, if I have any paperwork for the work session, I'll probably email it over to you, save you a trip from having to come up from the thing, just to get paperwork, since it would be no big plans or anything, okay?
Okay, I mean, if there's any resolutions or, or, uh, minutes that we can approve, we can do those, right?
Of course, of course. As, as of right now, I don't have anything, but, um, when I, when and if I do, I will, like I said, I'll email them over to you, so you all don't have to make a trip up here just to pick up paperwork. I'll, I'll make sure you get everything, okay?
Thanks, Christine. That sounds great. Okay. Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.